Bellevue City Council meeting for September 19th, 2022. Before we begin, our council member Janice Son is going to be attending remotely, and we need to have a motion to approve that.
I move to allow council members on to participate remotely in tonight's meeting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome Janice. So, let's, city clerk, can we do the roll call, please?
Excuse me, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And councilmember Son is joining us remotely.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson, could you lead us in the flag salute, please? Please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Where's the flag?
And to the republic.
Oh, it's started over.
It's started over. It's always right here.
It's habit, it's always on the other side, sorry about that. Okay, let's start again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought you were blocking it. Okay, we have three proclamations tonight. The first one is for National Recovery Month, and councilmember Lee, could you read that, please?
Here you go. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and well-being, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has had and continues to have a profound effect on mental health and substance use, with increasing numbers of people experiencing anxiety, depression, and loneliness, and whereas an estimated 575,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyle, both physically and emotionally, for individuals, families, and entire communities, and whereas as a community, we must encourage those we know with mental and substance use disorders to recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, King County, and the City of Bellevue invite all residents of Bellevue to participate in Recognizing National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as National Recovery Month in Bellevue, and call upon the people of Bellevue to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Lee. The next one is World Alzheimer's Day, and councilmember Stokes, would you please read that?
Mr. Wilson, thank you, Mayor, and I want to mention at the very beginning of this, this really means something to me because my wife passed away from dementia and Alzheimer's about a year and a half ago. And she was just over 60, so it's, anyhow. Whereas it is important to honor the thousands of people in Bellevue impacted by Alzheimer's disease and other types of dementia, diseases for which there is currently no proven means of prevention, treatment, or cure, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is a growing public health crisis in Washington and the rest of the city, of the country. 120,000 people in the state are now living with Alzheimer's disease relying on nearly 300,000 unpaid family caregivers providing 429 million hours of unpaid care and support to their loved ones. And whereas in 2022, an estimated 6.5 million Americans age 65 or older are living with Alzheimer's disease, and the Alzheimer's Association expects that number to more than double by 2060, barring the development of medical breakthrough to prevent, slow, or cure Alzheimer's disease. And whereas World Alzheimer's Day takes place annually on September 21st, is a day during which residents and businesses of Bellevue join others from across the globe to raise awareness and challenge the stigma that surrounds dementia. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 22, 2022, as World Alzheimer's Day in Bellevue, and urge all residents to join in this observation, observance, and recognize the 10-year anniversary of World Alzheimer's Month in September by joining the campaign to NoDementia. NoAlzheimer's are visiting ALZWA.org to learn more and discover ways to get involved in the cause or donate in support, care, and research that helps our neighbors facing dementia. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Stokes. Then the last one is National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we have councilmember Barxdale reading that, and then Oyuki Ornelas from Mini City Hall will be receiving it.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the culture and contributions of Americans tracing their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. And whereas the observation of Hispanic Heritage Month started in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting every year on September 15th. And whereas the month of September is significant because it marks the anniversary of independence for several Latin American countries, and whereas the Hispanic community is Bellevue's third-largest population group comprising about 7% of the population, and whereas, like many other groups in our nation and community, Hispanic people have been disproportionately impacted by the unique health and economic challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Bellevue is a welcoming community, and National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important reminder of how much strength we draw as a region from our immigrant roots and our values as a nation of immigrants. And whereas the cultural, educational, and economic influences of Hispanic residents can be appreciated in all aspects of life here in the Puget Sound region and throughout the East Side. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon all Bellevue residents to observe this month-long recognition and to celebrate the contributions of our Hispanic neighbors with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you, councilmember Barxdale. Mr. Ornelas, are you here? Mr., wait. My goodness, I am so sorry, I don't know why I thought that was a man. Come on up, do you have something you can say?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, right there. You can sit down if you want.
Is it on? Oh, yeah. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Hispanic community for the proclamation today from September 15th to October 15th. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Would you like to do a photo op?
Sure.
Okay. Do it. Right there. Okay. Is there a motion? We lost somebody. Yeah, okay. Do, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda amended to remove item 10B, Resolution 10140, which will be brought back to the council at a future meeting.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City clerk, do we have anyone signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, there are seven speakers registered for oral communications this evening. And before I begin calling names, I'll remind the public that oral communications is for a total time of no more than 30 minutes. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one particular side of a topic. And with that, I'll start calling our list, and the first person on our list this evening is Barbara Hughes. I believe, yes, Ms. Hughes is in person.
PPRS open space classification, sorry, it's easy without that, at 4277 137th Avenue, Northeast Bellevue. My name is Barbara Hughes, and my husband and I have owned our house at 13709 Northeast 48th Place in Bridle Trails for 20 years. I comment solely in my personal capacity as a Bridle Trails homeowner. My neighborhood is immediately north of Trails End. My homeowners association is the Brentwood Lane Property Owners Association, BLPOA, where 14 homes built in the early 70s. The BLPOA owns three trails which are for the use of BLPOA, although we currently allow anyone access in the spirit of being good neighbors. Four or so years ago, one homeowner who owned the underlying land that our West Trail occupies, BLPOA owns the easement for the trail situated on that homeowner's land, roped off the trail and sued BLPOA to deny us access. BLPOA fought this case and won at much expense, stress, and time to us all. Our private trails are now secured for BLPOA. Imagine how difficult it was to keep 13 homeowners paying for an attorney to fight our case over two years, how nasty and personal that fight became, and just how annoyed our homeowners were who were paid a lot of money to live in beautiful Bridle Trails, specifically to enjoy the trails and access to the state park. These trails are incredibly important to Bridle Trails homeowners. For many of us, the large R1 lots and trails are the reason we bought here. We willingly share these trails with our Bridle Trails neighbors, but this is on the broad understanding that they share their trails with us. I ask you, will there be not obvious consequences should the Trails End trail be declared public under PPRS? Lost tax revenue, lawsuits, the closure of adjoining and nearby private trails? How would members of the council respond if suddenly, without notice, their neighbors on all sides request a reclassification, and somehow the city construes a tax classification change to render the property as publicly accessible? I therefore respectfully ask the council to deny the PPRS application at 4277 137th Avenue, Northeast. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
The next speaker on the list is Kathleen Florial, who I believe is also in person.
Hello. I'm speaking on behalf of the Trees for Livability Organization in support of their Tree Code Study. I live in the West Lake Somamish neighborhood on a half-acre lot with more than a dozen Douglas firs, as well as cedars, big-leaf maples, Pacific medronds, and various native shrubs and other plants. I moved to Bellevue 28 years ago, attracted by the natural landscape, including, of course, the trees. I've loved trees all my life. I grew up in a picturesque suburb of Chicago called Riverside that was planned in the late 1800s by the renowned landscape architect Frederick Law Olmsted. But beyond my appreciation for the beauty of trees, I'm well aware of the crucial role they play in our ecosystem and in helping, in helping us combat climate change. A couple of years ago, I qualified to have my property designated as a certified wildlife habitat by the National Wildlife Federation, and so I share my space with a variety of birds, squirrels, rabbits, tree frogs, and other creatures. Recently, I've been alarmed by the increase in the number of trees being cut down in my neighborhood, and I was shocked to learn that Bellevue lagged behind nearby communities in its tree preservation policies. It was hard to believe that this place that is sometimes referred to as a city in a park was failing to take significant action to preserve its natural beauty and to address environmental factors that contribute to the well-being of all of its residents. It breaks my heart when I hear chainsaws taking down trees. I understand the need to remove those that are diseased or dangerous, or stand in the way of thoughtfully planned development, but not having a reasonable, up-to-date, comprehensive tree preservation code during the current era of climate crisis strikes me as irresponsible and indefensible. The price we're paying by not protecting our trees is high. We're diminishing our connection to the natural world, ignoring the aesthetic and climate-related benefits the trees provide, and tearing apart the ecosystem that supports life itself in its many forms. So I urge you to accept the recommendations of the Tree Code Study submitted by the Trees for Livability Organization. Doing so will make Bellevue a leader, not a laggard in tree preservation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Johnston.
My name is Pamela Johnston, 3741 122nd Avenue, Northeast. I speak because this is my neighborhood, Bridle Trails. I'm also talking about the public benefits rating system. I don't care if someone gets extra tax breaks that I don't get. Maybe I could get them too if I signed up for them. That's okay. But this issue was new to Bellevue. It was new, and we didn't take it as new. We took it as we could stamp off what King County did. We could stamp off what the state had actually readily already done and not ask the questions. I don't get it. I don't get when you don't have something on the agenda, you don't understand, that you can't just wait for the next time and do it right. If it deserves a study session, ask for a study session. This is the same thing that goes at planning commission. They shouldn't just put things off and just don't understand something. If they need time to understand it, they need time to understand it. It's not that, it's not just all the time crunches that we have. I would like to know if this is fair and equitable. If you have to, if you have at least one acre that you can devote to this, and maybe she does, then she can say, I get tax breaks on it. But if a whole bunch of homeowners came together and made a trail in like, say Cherry Crest neighborhood, they wouldn't get a tax break on it because it has to be a whole acre that they're saving. These are the things that we have to ask for the future. So when we get something new to us, yes, it's about that one thing, but it's also about our future. Dare to understand it. What is the meaning of it for Bellevue? There's a reason why in the state laws, it was talking about this should be a comprehensive plan amendment. That's what it says in the state law to me. It says it's a change in classification is a comp plan issue. But we're not doing it as a comp plan issue. We're doing it as signing off on what King County did. Sure, staff took a look and went there and looked at the property, but did they ask the neighbors about anything? No. Did they tell the homeowners association? No. Did they tell the general public? On the Seattle Times in the little notice section, thank you very much, because that is not proper notice. Yes, it's legal, but it's not what we need. We need you guys to work with us. And now they're changing the program. We only find out this because I looked in the original King County stuff for what they actually said at the meeting, and now I see they're changing the program. It's just like one thing after another, I can't keep up with it. So I, and now they can double dip. The people said it's okay to double dip. If they get it off already from the assessor, they can double dip and have another write-off too. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Loretta Lopez.
Members of the council, my name is Loretta Lopez, my address is 13419 Northeast 33rd Lane in Bellevue, and I'm here on behalf of the Bridle Trails Community Club, I'm the co-president. I'm here to speak on the issue of the tax reclassification ordinance that issue that now has been delayed and will appear before you at a different time. And my, our comment, my comment is this, that we have not as a, as a board reviewed this in the detail that it requires, it's very complicated. It is not obvious what the consequences are. On the face of it, it seems like a good plan, a good idea. We want natural vegetation, we want open space, we want trails. But the details are very, they're not very straightforward, and so we do want more time, and I'm pleased that it's not on the agenda tonight after all, we do want more time to review it, and we're surprised that we didn't know about it, that is, it has implications or may have unforeseen consequences that we need to review and address so that we do take a decision on it. So we're surprised that we didn't know about it. And fortunately, Pam happened to notice on the agenda that there was a new program, and it was an item that we'd never heard about, and thus, that's how we found out. And fortunately, Barbara Hughes, who spoke, has some experience with trails and some of the difficulties that can arise, and so we are concerned, and we're pleased that you all will assess it and review it in greater detail, since it requires that kind of deep analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. The next speaker on our list is Alyssa Barton. I believe Ms. Barton is joining us virtually, though I don't see you identified by name. If you can use the raise hand function, thank you.
Ms. Barton, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here today to testify in support of the recommendations in the Trees for Livability Tree Code Study. My name's Alyssa Barton, I'm an attorney, and I currently work as the Clean Water Program Director at Puget Soundkeeper Alliance, an environmental nonprofit dedicated to protecting and enhancing the waters of Puget Sound. I'm also a board member, serving on the Board of the Bellevue Farmers Market, and I serve on the litigation committee for the Washington State chapter of the Sierra Club. I am not, however, here tonight representing any of these organizations, I'm here as a concerned citizen of Bellevue. I live in South Bellevue, near the Mercer Slough, where the South Bellevue Light Rail Station is currently in progress. I moved to Bellevue in 2020 during the pandemic to live here with my partner who manages an apartment complex here. Moving to Bellevue during the pandemic was a great time for me to move here because I have the privilege of being able to transition to work from home, which meant that I could take long walks in the community and explore the East Side's many amazing parks. Throughout 2020 and 2021, my partner and I would spend at least an hour every day walking around the neighborhoods, including Surry Downs, Inati, Boarts Village, Victoria, Newcastle, Lake Mont, Lake Hills, Kelsey Creek, and more. In the West Bellevue area alone, we've seen at least five different redevelopment projects where almost all the remaining large trees on the property were torn down in the last three years. Despite that, I'm a lifelong environmental activist and outdoors enthusiast, I don't just appreciate trees for their aesthetic qualities. As someone who's worked on environmental policy for the last decade grounded in science, I know that our big trees also provide immense environmental, human health, and public benefit as well. I'm a water pollution policy wonk by day, and for the last six years, I've advocated for stronger clean water protections in Washington State for Puget Sound. For example, I've helped improve development requirements in the Western Washington Municipal General Stormwater Permits that regulate Phase 1 and 2 municipalities, including Bellevue, and I've pushed for more widespread implementation of low-impact development, including more green stormwater infrastructure throughout the region. Our large old trees and green stormwater infrastructure help slow and filter stormwater pollution. They help prevent erosion, they help protect and restore our waters while greening communities, they ensure climate resiliency, help reduce certain air pollutants, create wildlife habitat, and can create microclimate around streams. They make our communities walkable, safer, and healthier. In closing, I support the recommendations in the Trees for Livability Code Study, and I support urgent action by this council to adopt code revisions as soon as possible to protect more of the significant and landmark trees here in Bellevue. Every tree we can protect today can help prevent negative environmental impacts and cost the community down the line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Maggie Miller.
Good evening, I'm Maggie Miller, resident of downtown Bellevue. I'm here to speak on behalf of Bellevue's trees and all who need and enjoy them. I'll share my own personal experience, but I believe I also represent thousands of citizens who never come to speak at a council meeting. Having trees in our environment affects our sense of well-being even when we're not consciously aware of it. My apartment, only two blocks from here, has windows facing a courtyard that exists between our building, another apartment building, a church, and some offices. When I first moved into my apartment seven years ago, my view was of tall shade trees, flowering vines, and green ground cover, and it was fun to watch the many birds flying back and forth singing and building their nests there. Often I saw squirrels running and playing and jumping from tree to tree. The neighborhood dogs love romping there still. Approximately two years ago, give or take, the church which seems to own the courtyard property had several of the large trees cut down. I clearly remember the terrible and shocking sights and sounds of the trees being destroyed, and I was concerned for the animals who lived in them. The view that so many apartments shared was irreparably changed. I called City Hall and received a call back, maybe from Land Use, saying the church would only cut down five trees and that they would plant more, but over time, they cut down more than five tall trees, and they were replaced with smaller trees, more like the size of saplings and bushes. This indicates to me the need for stricter monitoring and enforcement, as well as legislation for increased protection of mature trees. Without those trees, intense summer heat and sunlight shines directly into our windows, requiring the use of blackout curtains and portable air conditioners. We now see much more of the other apartment building and the offices. There's also less privacy for the windows of individual apartments and increased noise amplification between the buildings. There are far fewer birds, and I rarely see squirrels anymore. Every tree that was cut down is missed. Although I have been focusing on my experience downtown, the same could be said for our residential neighborhoods where kids play and residents like to get their daily walks in. People, businesses, or builders who don't want trees on their property can buy property that doesn't have trees, but once the trees are cut down, the result is permanent. We need to keep the mature trees we have. Planting new trees is great, but it's not the same. Trees take many years to grow to be the size of those being cut down in some cases. Trees really add so much to our health and enjoyment of the space, as well as providing homes for wildlife. Trees are beneficial, and there is no risk of having too many trees, so if anything, we should be concerned about losing too many of the trees that help make Bellevue a nice place to live. With the continued growth boom in Bellevue, there will be more people, more noise, and more pollution, which make protecting and maintaining our trees very important. So I hope our city council will do everything in its power to protect the trees that do so much for us on a daily basis and provide us with a better quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker this evening is Alex Zimmerman.
I live in Bellevue for 35 years. I come upon approximately every meeting and try and understand why it's going on here. And I see people come to this place and talking before me right now, like a six, seven people talk. You mostly talking about tree, about rabbit. Guys, are you 150,000 freaking idiot, all of it? You don't know what is going on? You don't know what is democracy? we should be concerned about losing too many of the trees that help make Bellevue a nice place to live. With the continued growth boom in Bellevue, there will be more people, more noise, and more pollution, which make protecting and maintaining our trees very important. So I hope our city council will do everything in its power to protect the trees that do so much for us on a daily basis and provide us with a better quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker this evening is Alex Zimmerman.
My name is Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America. I've lived in Bellevue for 35 years. I come across approximately every meeting and try and understand why it's going on here. And I see people come to this place and talking before me right now, like a six, seven people talk. You mostly talking about tree, about rabbit. Guys, are you 150,000 freaking idiot, all of it? You don't know what is going on? You don't know what is Democrat mafia did for last three year? Bring a revolution? What is totally destroy America? In future, right now, probably another couple of years, we will come. We have right now World War III, but another couple of years, we can maybe have atomic bomb. It's exactly what's happening. So I speak right now to this 150 idiot who live in this city, you know what it means, who support Democrat. You need stop and doing this, because when you not clean this dirty chamber, look, this all Democrat. Why? Why? Because they look like a zombie, all identical. It's a problem what is we have, is they all have same opinion. It's a part of mafia cartel, a democratic mafia cartel. When we not stop and this, you know what it means? What is our future? Our future very simple. A damn Nazi Gestapo, democracy fascism. This is exactly what has happened. I don't talking about Trump and 40 people what is the most arrested is go to concentration camp. And I don't talking about system what is we have right now, more dangerous than have German Nazi Soviet communist, because it's controlling a idiot. Destroying America who exist for 250 years need be a sick, mentally sick people. I cannot understand another word. So for last three year, we kill a Democrat mafia revolt, kill a thousand and thousand people. Us goal stop and them, because each revolt can go for many years. Look Russian revolt in 91, 30 years, they cannot come back. Each revolt is a thousand and thousand people will be dead. So I speak right now to everybody who not freaking idiot. It's only one way. Bring people America back is change situation. You don't vote for Democrat, because they very dangerous. They all mentally sick. Start with president, who by definition, mentally sick man. Stand up America, cleanse the dirty chamber from this bandita Nazi. Thank you very much.
That is the end of our pre-registered list of speakers this evening. However, we do still have a few minutes of oral communications. If there's anyone who would like to speak to the council that's joining us in chambers, please raise your hand. Anyone joining us online, please raise your hand as well. I will note that there, we have reached the maximum number of speakers in support of trees and also with concern about the public benefit rating system. So if you have a topic other than that, please raise your hand. Heidi Dean, I do see you online. Can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you very much, Charmaine. Tonight, I just wanted to say thank you for the proclamation on Alzheimer's, World Alzheimer's Month. Alzheimer's is something that has touched my life, both professionally and personally. Both of my grandmothers had Alzheimer's and passed away in the mid-stages from other complications. But, and I worked in senior care with folks, both as a nursing assistant and in marketing and admissions. So I, I saw that up close and personal from a professional standpoint, but I also lived with my paternal grandparents at one point while grandma was transitioning into the middle stages, and I saw what my grandpa went through as her caregiver. And so I wanted to say, God bless you, Councilmember Stokes. I'm very sorry for the loss of your wife. You probably more than anyone up on the dais understand that 36-hour day. And, and I am very hopeful that at some point, we will find a cure for Alzheimer's and dementia. But as we wait for that to come, I'm very committed to ensuring that the family, that the caregivers that provide care for folks living with Alzheimer's, that they have the right support that they need, and that, that we hold the facilities, the communities providing care for people, that we give them the adequate funding, that we oversee them. I did this last year, return briefly to the workforce at a memory care community here in Bellevue. I left after only two and a half months because of what I saw, and that has actually strengthened my commitment, because my dad is showing the beginning stages of Alzheimer's, and I thought things have not gotten better, even though communities, the facilities have, they're much more big and beautiful, and sometimes some of them are built as monuments to the owner's ego. The, the care has not improved. And so if it hap, if it comes down to it, I will be taking care of my dad because of what I witnessed. And so I just want to make sure that we, as a city, as a state, as, as a country, that we are providing the appropriate care for people living with Alzheimer's and dementia and, and supporting the people who love them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do not see any additional hands raised, Mayor, that would close oral communications.
Okay, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, I believe you have a recommendation for appointment to the Human Services Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, happy to bring forward Angela White for consideration by my colleagues this evening. Having the, the last two folks that we've appointed at this seat, both had transfers, either they or their partner out of state. So not only have we selected somebody who is a downtown resident, but they're also small business owners in, in Bellevue. So the chances of them leaving are pretty slim, at least we hope. Angela White is a long history, not only of living in the city, but also giving back to this community, having volunteered for attain housing, rebuilding together, Seattle's Union Gospel Mission, Construction for Change, Habitat for Humanity, and many more. So very happy to bring this forward, and with that, I will move to appoint Angela White to a partial term on the Human Services Commission expiring on May 31, 2023.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome Angela White. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're on to our study session item. Just one, Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. As you mentioned, we have one item on your study session agenda this evening, and that is the Culture and Economic Development Quarterly Report. The last report was done in, back in May 22 of this year. A lot has transpired since then, and we're here to provide the council an update of some of that, of what's just happened. Joining us this evening is Michael Cotterman, who is the Director of our Community Development Department, and joining him is Jessica Nadel, Chief Economic Development Officer. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jessie. Or is it to?
Go ahead.
Bye.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. We're looking forward to tonight's conversation as part of our quarterly reports on economic development. New clicker, let's see if, there we go. Tonight's presentation is just informational-only, update on all of the work that the staff and the citywide organization have been doing to support economic development. Our agenda tonight will cover tourism, workforce, the office market, and some highlights, some notable highlights of local companies. Broad statement, Bellevue continues to do very well. There is continuing confidence, both locally and nationally, on Bellevue's future, but we are also part of the macroeconomic trends and changes that are happening in the system. So tonight, we'll highlight some of the successes on local work to help improve economic resiliency and economic diversity, but also put a couple of clouds on the radar just so we're all aware. The good news is, the 2020 ED Plan lays out pathways for improving economic diversity and economic resiliency. The six focus areas in the ED Plan on capacity buildings, entrepreneurship, workforce, retail, creative economy, and tourism are helping broaden the resiliency of the local economy, lay better foundations for the future, and build sectors that are complementary to tech, and help improve our ability to navigate market changes. One of the big successes, of course, is our work in tourism. Got some updated numbers for you from the recent Rock and Roll Marathon. The total attendee count was 10,500 for that event. About 6,000 people came from other parts of the Puget Sound region into Bellevue to experience a place where hopefully they all want to be going forward. We did have 4,500 overnight hotel rooms, which contributed $4.8 million in local visitor spending. That's about 1.8 million more than our preliminary numbers. And our hotels are ecstatic about the results. Pre-pandemic, we averaged about 40% occupancy during Labor Day, and this past year was 80%, so double the occupancy on a Labor Day weekend, which has historically been a challenge for Bellevue because of our previous dependency, our strong reliance on business travel. So Visit Bellevue, our downtown hoteliers and others are very happy, and this shows the results of the work that the city has been doing in partnership with Visit Bellevue and others to strengthen the visitor experience. There is a very long quote from the Bellevue Collection. They were very excited and couldn't, couldn't quite condense it down, so we have a very long quote from them in there. That particular event, the Rock and Roll Marathon, is part of our long, our larger work on helping the tourism economy recover. I'm happy to note that as a Q2, we are almost back to pre-pandemic numbers, about 79.3% average occupancy through June, and high 70s, mid to low 80s occupancy is what we were doing in 2019 and early 2020. This is particularly exciting because business travel has not come back yet, so this is almost all leisure growth, which is a result of the great work that Visit Bellevue has been doing to help shore up those numbers. It also is a reflection of some of the recent policy updates around the sound code, alcohol policy, and others that help benefit, help benefit events that are designed to support residents and visitors. I do want to note, though, that we are still unclear if this bump in leisure travel is sustainable. There's still a lot of travel that's happening, as pent-up demand, as people come out of the pandemic. The hotel industry calls it revenge travel. I'm not sure I'm ready to call it that, but do want to note that we're not sure of this sustainable level. So the work on the tourism promotion area will be very important, because it will help solidify the resources that'll keep our tourism economy in the recovered and growth mode. As you know, the tourism promotion area is a, is a program that has to be done in partnership with another municipality. Our partner is the City of Redmond. They are wrapping up their review of some of the tourism promotion area documents in the next couple of weeks, so we hope to be able to bring back the inter-local agreements and other ordinances to the council for review in quarter four. So just want to make sure you're aware that is still going on. We're just letting our friends in Redmond catch up. The next item in terms of work that is going very well from the ED Plan is workforce. I believe in May, the council got a presentation that included some information about the local population in Bellevue that we're hoping to support. We do also want to take the regional view, because Bellevue is a regional employment center. As a reminder, our workforce program has dual efforts. There is the work to support immediate job seekers and helping them find the resources to get trained, mentors to get back into the system, apprenticeship opportunities, et cetera. But the other part is also the long-term pipeline for our workforce, with the key part being our technology sector. Upon recent review, we have identified that there is demand locally within King County for approximately 15,000 technology workers every year. That is both new positions and rehiring for, for older positions. And our regional educational institutions only graduate about 4,200 tech students every year. So we have a gap of about 11,000. Some of these numbers will change based on the recent hiring slowdown, but about 11,000 gap, 11,000 student gap per year. And one note here is also that some of the previous work, or some of the previous jobs were filled by a lot of inward migration from outside the region, folks moving here from across the country or around the world, and that will continue, but it will look different. Migration into the U.S. and into the region will shift, continue to shift, and particularly as the federal government continues to invest in other innovation and technology hubs in other parts of the country. Some of the recent congressional legislation supports funding for additional R&amp;D and creating new centers in places like Ohio, Kansas, parts of the country that have not benefited as much from the tech boom of the last 20 years. And while this is broadly great for the entire country, it does mean that Bellevue is going to be in a more competitive landscape going forward. So a big important piece is making sure we increase the local student capacity for graduation of technology degrees. So we have connected with Bellevue College, GIX, Northeastern University, which has a growing presence in the Puget Sound, and others. So we will be working with them to identify some opportunities. We're still in the process of baselining information, building our connections with the, the important stakeholders, and this is long-term work. Building a system that can help close that 11,000-person gap will take several years, but we are excited to bring back additional information for the council in the future. We are also noting that there are important synergies already between the workforce program and our business retention work. An example is Pokemon, which has a, a large and growing office in Bellevue. During one of our recent business engagement trips, they talked to us about some of the problems they were having with connecting with additional workforce, and so we were able to get our workforce specialists engaged and help them understand the apprenticeship and internship programs that exist already in the region that they could tap into immediately. So we are building synergies across the program already. And with that, we'll move into some of the more macro, got about three slides on macro. Data, again, the importance of building economic diversity and economic resiliency. Broad statement, Bellevue continues to do very well, and there is large confidence in Bellevue, but there are charges, changes and challenges in the larger macro environment. The council may remember that we discovered during the ED Plan process, about 5% of all software jobs in the U.S. are right here in Bellevue. That is an incredible number, however you slice it, particularly for a community of our size, and that has been a big benefit during our growth periods, and it may prove a little bit of a challenge during the restructuring or adjustments that are going to happen in the economy. Bellevue has one of the lower economic diversity indexes among our peer set, which means that we have more employment concentrated in fewer sectors, particularly software development. And that's not a bad thing. We benefit from that, but it does mean that we have to do some work on the pipeline for other sectors besides software, or in different parts of software. But we do still see companies coming into the region. As an example, in the last year, we did have 11 new office tenants come into Bellevue. We had two, two reductions and one exit, but we did have 11 expansions in the last year. Those leases, though, are about half the size that they were pre-pandemic. So that means that companies are taking space still, but it's smaller. That's important to note, considering the robust office pipeline that we have in terms of what's under construction now and what was in early planning stages before. Again, it's an opportunity, is, there's opportunities to improve the tenant mix or improve the diversity of sectors here in the city. The work on the comp plan in particular is a great opportunity to make sure that we have flexibility for the future for investment-intensive sectors like biosciences or hardware, which are harder to relocate and often require people to be more on-site. So we are talking with the comprehensive plan team so that they have the exact same information, and that they will be able to integrate that into the policies that they bring forward for, for the council to consider. But Bellevue does continue to benefit from the long-term vision that it has, just maybe some of the, the specific mix needs a little fine-tuning for the future at this moment. Another change that we're seeing is change in what we call user sentiment, or more specifically on office user sentiment. We have seen in the last couple of years, the continuing convergence of what workers are looking for in terms of their office neighborhood and their residential neighborhood. The graph on the screen represents a recent survey by Gensler, the global architecture and design company. They surveyed office users for what they were looking for in a business district, and social spaces were the highest request among office users and folks going to business districts. Restaurants, cafes, public spaces, cultural institutions, museums, all rank very highly. You'll note, office buildings are the third from the bottom. Doesn't mean that they aren't interested in employment, it just means that what they're looking for in their office neighborhood is now very synced up with what they're looking for in their residential neighborhood. This data is backed up by the discussions we're having in our business engagement visits. Our, our businesses are telling us that their employees really are looking for more amenitized spaces, and this is the reason that we're seeing the slowdown in tenant improvements. There have been some notable headlines about companies that are slowing down the interior build-out of their spaces, because they're trying to adapt to the changing office environment. So this combined with, with the changes in the, in the demand for office space, we may see some increased vacancy in the next couple of years. Nothing to be overly concerned about. There is, again, continuing confidence in Bellevue, but that number may tick up as the office market continues to adjust. Our long-term competitiveness will really be improved by residents and offices coming closer together in our mixed-use neighborhoods like downtown and Bellred. Some of these, some of our neighborhoods will benefit from spaces coming online, more apartments in Bellred, more housing in downtown, and more spaces along the street face in downtown for people to, to patronize. downtown for people to patronize. But one of the big amenities that our businesses need right now is residents, additional folks in the neighborhoods, in the mixed-use neighborhoods, eighteen hours a day. We're seeing that locally, office utilization has stabilized at about forty-five percent. That means forty-five percent of employees are coming into the office sometime during the week. The graph on the screen represents four cities, the city of Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, and Los Angeles, just to show the different utilization rates across those regions. We're more closely tied to the Seattle region because of our proximity and because of our high-tech concentration. So the increase in, an increase in production of housing would help improve long-term economic competitiveness for Bellevue because it does reduce commute times. We're hearing from workers that they would like to live in walking distance or within two to three transit stops of their office. Increases the amount of workers that are available in all sectors, so whether it is an independent mom-and-pop shop or our major employers, bringing the workers closer to their worksite benefits everybody and also customers for our street-facing businesses in particular. We hear from our restaurants, bars, and other retailers that they continue to struggle with things like midday occupancy, so there's some of our downtown restaurants still don't have enough foot traffic to open up for lunch again. So bringing residents closer to those spaces and creating more eighteen-hour neighborhoods in those areas will definitely be a benefit and amenity for our businesses. We'll have more information to share and insights after we conclude some of our initial work on the retail study. We're currently in negotiations with the consultant on that and hope to be able to bring the council some information from the retail work in Q1, and that will also help the office market remain resilient by making those offices continue to be premium and improve their marketability for all of our companies that want to be in Bellevue. And with that, just some highlights of local companies, because even with some of those clouds, great things are still happening locally. Notably Bellevue has, notably Bellevue-based T-Mobile has partnered with SpaceX. This is a big one, got a lot of headlines recently. Their goal is to end dead zones, particularly in natural areas like state parks and national parks, very on-brand for the Northwest with their emphasis on bringing connectivity to these remote areas. TerraPower is a Bellevue-based microfusion startup that recently raised three-quarters of a billion dollars, and they are renovating their East Gate headquarters and very excited to continue growing here in Bellevue. They're also benefiting from connections with our workforce specialists. Locally-based startup Gordian, which does backend support for airlines and travel sites, recently also raised twenty-five million. And then notably, a new arrival, Space Flight, which is kind of like the Uber for space payloads. They make sure that end-to-end management services are done for things going up into orbit. They will be opening their Bellevue office next week, and they're very excited to be joining the very energetic and innovative community here in Bellevue. We'll wrap up with what's next, as always. The BDA will be with the council next month to provide an update on their work promoting downtown. Again, we hope to be able to bring forward some of the tourism promotion area enabling documents in the next quarter. We'll be back in the first half of 2023 with some updates on our art space study, as well as our retail study, and also a deep dive on the fantastic things that are happening in the arts district. There is an association in Bellred that is looking forward to taking the arts district mantle and moving it very quickly. So lots of great work that's happening to reinforce economic diversity and resiliency here in Bellevue. And with that, we will take your questions.
Great. That was a great presentation. Thank you so much. I was going to start with this end, and we'll just, you'll be next, Councilmember Robertson.
Exciting stuff. This is great. So I'll just limit myself to three. The office market, I see it softening. We at one point had one of the lowest occupancy rates and highest rent per square foot in the region. What is the forecast for the softening going to do, or what do we expect it to do with regard to rent and occupancy? That's question one.
With regards to specific rates, there's still too much uncertainty in the market to be able to make good predictions. We do see that broadly rates are staying stable or some are still increasing, within Bellevue specifically. So we can bring back more information for the council in the future, but there's still a lot of uncertainty on the rates.
Then, same question. Now, I recognize we don't own crystal balls, but do we have any updated economic forecast information of what we can expect to see? I mean, it seems like with the tech industry here, even if the economy's slowing elsewhere, it seems like it's cooking with gas here. So what do we know?
We know that the tech industry is still doing fairly well. They are slowing down their hiring, but we don't expect any large layoffs in the region. So I think a large part of it will continue to be good in Bellevue. Just the workforce pipeline and the housing will be the key challenges for our larger employers in particular.
Okay. And then, I guess, one of the things that this council has talked about many times, and I saw that you said we only have forty-two hundred tech workers graduating every year for the number of ten thousand jobs or something. I remember when we got GIX here in Bellevue, and I've, we've all been watching Bellevue College and how it's been evolving. And a future update, could you, is there any way we could get data on what those two universities are doing for the east side or for Bellevue? And I don't, and also an update on GIX, because I know they were going to be adding programs every year or two, new programs. We just haven't had an update on that lately. I'd love to see what they're doing and how that's impacting. It was supposed to be a huge incubation process for tech here in Bellevue, so I'd love to know what's happening with that. And I guess I would add Digipen to that list, even though they're in Redmond, because that's another one that is spurring and minting new graduates in tech. Thanks.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the report. I, the first thought that came to mind for me was all roads lead to nightlife when I saw the interest in social spaces, and specifically restaurants, lounges, and such. So excited about that, and also just really interested in seeing how that plays out in the comp plan and specifically in the Wilburton area, commercial area. I think in terms of the updates, I'm really interested also in understanding how this looks across the different TOD areas. So I know right now we're looking at Bellevue as a whole, but I'm really interested in seeing what that looks like in the Spring District and East Gate, like in each of the areas, maybe if there's a way to segment. It doesn't have to be maybe at the detail level, but maybe just sort of an indicator or two that we can compare across TOD areas. I think, I don't have a crystal ball either, but I do think in terms of the discussions that are happening in the tech industry, it means that I think we're going to have to do a lot more to attract people to Bellevue, things that we're already working on, but just kind of putting it out there, because we might not be able to rely on the assumption that offices, especially given what you just mentioned in terms of it cooling off, are just going to draw people directly. So it kind of lines up with what I think you presented about the interest in social spaces, and I'm also curious about what that looks like for housing, replacing maybe some of the office space development that we were talking about, similar to what we saw, I think, in Arlington, where they were starting to take some of their office space and convert it, or instead build housing instead of office space. And given the point that you mentioned, that they need more residents. Thank you.
Any thoughts?
Mike, did you want to mention anything about housing?
Housing is obviously something we're taking a very close look at, and we've talked before about Wilburton in particular. That's an area, we know we need that mix, and we need a higher concentration of housing there, not just for that area, but for the city as a whole. And I think what we saw in Arlington and what we've been talking about, both in Bellred and also in Wilburton, is really creating that dynamic mix of uses. And the information that Jesse presented in terms of what the surveys are showing, what the employees are looking for, is consistent with information that I've seen from other jurisdictions as well, and areas that they're, we're working on converting business parks and things into more urban-type environments. So it's a trend that's continuing, and we expect it will continue to go on. I think the softening of the office market will hopefully put a little bit more pressure on the housing side of things, and we may see some of that conversion. I know I was speaking with Liz Stead in Development Services, and that's something they're kind of keeping an eye on right now to see if we have any projects that are early in the pipeline that might want to make that switch. I don't have any specifics at this point, but that is something that we're looking at.
Awesome, thank you. And the only last, the last thing I'll add is, as we think about the increase in social spaces and how we try to meet that need or address that need, just keeping the mom-and-pop shops and affordable commercial spaces in mind so that they can, so we can get more of those to attract folks as well. Thank you.
Well, I love how we're talking about a fifteen-minute city and an eighteen-hour neighborhood. It seems like I wrote a little column for It's Your City two years ago, talking about a fifteen-minute city, and it seemed kind of like a far-off dream, and here we are today, talking about the reality of that. And this week, I took a pledge not to drive my car for a week, and it's just a pleasure to ride your bike and walk, especially on a day like this, in downtown. But in other parts of the city, it's not so easy to have that fifteen-minute city feel. So I really like the focus on what we can do in Wilburton and Bellred more, and all the parts of Bellevue that we want to focus that transit-oriented development and give people an opportunity to live a life without a car if they chose to do that. You said on Slide Eight that the comprehensive plan update can help provide flexibility for more investment-intensive sectors and place-based businesses. Can you explain that a little more?
Absolutely. Investment-intensive and place-based businesses are things like, for example, advanced manufacturing, biosciences, things where there is a larger capital investment in the facility. One of the things, we would not classify software as investment-intensive because it's usually just desks and computers. So in places like perhaps East Gate in the future, there may be an opportunity for bioscience to come in and become a cluster in East Gate, because it's much harder for them to relocate their facility to another community because that's a much higher cost. And so we're, we'd want to be, provide flexibility, not be prescriptive, but provide flexibility for those kinds of uses to come in.
Great, thank you. My last question is, do you have, I mean, we've been doing workforce pipeline work for a number of years. Do we have any data on success? Are we seeing people coming through Bellevue College and getting an internship and getting into jobs, do you know?
Our direct work is still very early in terms of how we can track those folks. One of the challenges that we face is, once we make the connection to a Bellevue College or to a JX or an apprenticeship program, there's not always a lot of follow-up with us, even if we do proactively reach out. So tracking the individual from intake through completion is very challenging for us, but we will look for, of course, proxy metrics as well.
Okay, well, I second Councilmember Robertson wanting a report back on Bellevue educational institutions. I think there's a good news story there, too. Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Zahn, and then we'll go to Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mike and Jesse. Very thorough presentation and report. I appreciate it. The thing about the future of work, I'm really curious about how long we think it'll be before we settle into what proportion of the jobs will stay virtual or hybrid or come back onsite, because that builds into what kind of amenities. Or maybe if we have more amenities, they will come back, so I wanted to understand a bit more about that, as well as on the leisure growth. Maybe I would say, maybe this is live life to the fullest extent, travel, and same kind of question, do we have a sense for whether that's a bump right now because some of the international travel is still quite challenging? Or do we think that that is a trend for tourism that will remain? So those are my first two questions.
So I'll try the first one first, if that's okay, and then Jesse can add into that and answer that more about the second question. I think regarding how soon things will settle down into the new reality or the new normal, if you will, that's really probably anybody's guess at this point. Most of what I've been reading, though, I think, is looking at something probably in the next couple of years, we should have a much better sense of where that's going to stay, because as we've seen, as Jesse mentioned, in the office market in particular, the major employers are still sorting through just what that office space is going to look like, and they're still trying to get a handle on how many people are going to come back into the office. We're seeing a slight increase, but it seems like it's leveled off, at least for the time being, and unless there's some significant policy changes on the part of major employers to require a return to the office, we may not see much more of an increase over time. So I think we're starting to see the beginning, is sort of my prediction, is we're seeing the beginning of where that trend is going to land, but we'll see over the next couple of years if that holds.
So that might be impact on the retail study, right? And what, how much retail we might need to support the office market?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, do you want to elaborate on that?
Of course. Yes, Councilmember Zahn, so yes, that is part of the intent of the work with the retail study is to understand both what amount do we need in the current environment, how can we support the existing retailers? Because as Michael mentioned, for at least the next couple of years, we're hearing that the forty to fifty percent utilization is where the office market will be. The council may have seen a release from Amazon CEO Andy Jassy a couple of weeks ago that he has no intent of forcing his employees back into the office. So as Michael said, unless Microsoft, Amazon, or another major employer makes that kind of move, where we are now is roughly where we will be for the next couple of years. And with regards to the amenitization, one of the reasons, you know, we say that bringing residents closer to the office is part of the long-term solution is because we're hearing from our employers that the amenities, the amenities by themselves will not bring employees back into the office. It is proximity to the office that makes the biggest impact for them. They come for social spaces, for socialization, for team meetings, but they don't come for the coffee shop on the corner, if that makes sense. So the proximity of residents really does have a lot of net benefits. And then with regards to leisure, again, similar to the office market, it's a little too early to tell whether that leisure bump will last. We're paying very close attention to the data with Brad Jones over at Visit Bellevue. It looks like some of this might be here to stay, thanks to all of the great work that they've been doing with the hoteliers and marketing Bellevue as a place that visitors want to be, but it's still very early to know how much of that is sustainable in the long term.
Okay. And then my last question is, I noticed in the packet, the vacancy rate for East Gate is twice the amount for downtown and almost citywide, so can you talk a little more about that? I know you had mentioned TerraPower being in East Gate now, so maybe that will bump the vacancy or reduce it? It just looked really interesting to me, the big difference.
Yes, and East Gate is one of the, is the office market in Bellevue that does have a lower performance. The stock is older, it's auto-oriented, and it's not amenitized to the level that our very competitive workforce is looking for. So it's an area where I think we did some work in East Gate a few years ago with some of the zoning to help provide some opportunities, and it will be, continue to be an opportunity area, particularly for future business recruitment work.
And just to add to that, I think East Gate is something that we're going to be, we're going to look at that through the comprehensive plan, as Jesse mentioned, we did that plan a few years ago. So we'll look at that again through the comprehensive plan and see if there are any changes that we need to do right now, but I see that as more of a long-term area for redevelopment, particularly as we, and this is going to seem really long-term, but as we get into ST three or four, whatever, I think it's three, ultimately that will have some transit out to that area, which will make a big difference and create more of that, that critical mass of activity that will really need to make that area pop in terms of future development. So it does have opportunity, and I think in the shorter term, it may be more of what Jesse was talking about in terms of that investment for biotech and that type of environment, if we can create the opportunity for that cluster to occur there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. First off, I wasn't here during our last meeting. I think you gave the council report on the Rock and Roll Marathon, or Half Marathon, but congratulations on that and everybody involved in that, just, you know, incredible effort, I think, which will be a real tipping point for the city of Bellevue. We're going to see more of these types of big events coming to this city. They want to be here in Bellevue, and now they can see that we can actually pull it off. So fantastic, and it was so great, not only to see the number of participants, but also just the economic impact to the city that affected hotels, restaurants, et cetera. It was just tremendous. that affected hotels, restaurants, et cetera. It was just tremendous event all around. And I think we're going to be, be seeing a lot, a lot more vendors knocking on our door, asking about similar type events. One question I did have, and again, you may have addressed this during, during the last meeting, and Jesse, I'm going to direct this towards you, but it's, it's in regards to some of the letters that we've received. And if you want to need to get back to me on this, that's fine. But a couple of letters from a couple of businesses and a few residents about notification and were caught off guard. Can you just address that for me just quickly in terms of what the process was? And if there was any key learnings there that we might need to, to, to address? One of the reasons, someone in my neighborhood, the Waffler, their, unfortunately, their restaurant was completely cut off because of the route, which is unfortunate, but as you might expect, Waffler breakfast, that's a big part of his business. So I'm, I'm curious how we prevent that from happening in, in the future.
Yes, absolutely, Deputy Mayor. And just as a quick note, the organizers from Ironman were also very excited about Bellevue. Everything we've heard back from them is glowing. They were very impressed by the, the whole organization and how we supported their event and worked together.
You'll know what I said in the future, because I fully expect this to come back year after year.
And with regards to the, the outreach and the notification and engagement, there are always things that we can do better. I think one point of pride is the total count of complaints that we saw was only 30 across the weekend.
Yeah.
For an event of that size, that is actually significantly impressive.
Absolutely.
But we know we can always do better. As part of our retrospective process, we'll be taking a look at things and how we can improve for next year and for other events, including making sure that both the businesses and any police officers or security that might be helping with directing traffic also understand fully what is allowed and is not. With the, with the case of the Waffler, for example, I think it was just some misunderstanding about, you know, whether or not cars or others were allowed to enter the parking lot. So we will be looking at how to improve that notification and clarification going forward.
Yeah, no, fantastic. And I'm sure it's on your list, but since it's on a Sunday, be sure to have some faith-based organizations on there as well, because I saw a few emails on that, on that as well. So, but yeah, fantastic event. My, my only criticism, it's not really criticism, but next year, I really hope that instead of the Washington Half Marathon, it is the Bellevue Half Marathon. So I would, because every one of their other events is always the city. It's not the state. But I, I'm curious, the, the number, the what, 10,500 runners, where, where does that align in all of their events? Is that near the top, about middle of the road? Because I know they do these in smaller cities as well as larger. So where, where does this kind of fall in line?
I'm not sure where we would rank in terms of total registrations. I'd have to get back to you on that. But I do know that we did outperform in terms of how many they expected to sign up for year one.
Okay. Fantastic. Yeah. So going back to an issue that my colleagues have had great comments on about the office space and, you know, it's, it's a very interesting time because you have President Biden yesterday saying, you know, the pandemic's over. However, Gallup poll released, I believe it was yesterday, said that 1 in 3 office workers are still scared to go back into the office. So there's still, I really think it is going to be one or two years until we get more and more folks to the office. I think it's going to be more of a hybrid. And I think this is one of the ways where, you know, we benefit from having a high-tech sector here in Bellevue because they can shift to that and pivot to that kind of model a lot easier than a lot of other businesses. But what are we doing to encourage, though, at the same time, although it's challenging? So, you know, we hear we want amenities. We hear we want these mom-and-pop shops around these businesses, creating community, et cetera, et cetera. You mentioned restaurants that haven't been able to reopen yet because, or reopen for dinner perhaps, but not for lunchtime because there's not enough activity sometimes. So what, so what are we telling those, those restaurateurs and the coffee shop owners, et cetera, that we want them to, you know, expand their hours or expand their services? Because only then can we start, it's almost like a chicken-and-egg situation for, for the major employers. So that's just my last question there.
With regards to, to those mom-and-pop businesses, our restaurateurs in particular, we are working with our community organizations where we can. For example, in Old Bellevue, we have been working very closely with the OBMA, the Old Bellevue Merchants Association, to help make sure that they're getting as much information out to their, their members as possible, creating activation events. They just hosted the Wine Walk last week, which was sold out. And our, our city staff was very, working with them very closely on the organization of that event. And similarly with the BDA around the marketing for other parts of downtown. And we are working with, with businesses in other parts of the city, including Crossroads and Bell Red and soon Factoria, to help them create versions of OBMA or the BDA so that they can take on some of that organizing and marketing amongst themselves as well. Because from our staff perspective, the best thing we can do is help them increase the number of customers that they have. And that does require a partnership effort with those businesses.
Great. Thank you.
If I could just add one quick thing on the, I'd be remiss if I didn't pick up on something you had said, Deputy Mayor, about all the work that went into the one city, or I'm sorry, the Rock and Roll Marathon. It was a one-city effort that involved staff from every department in the city. So when Jesse was talking about the retrospective, we're going to be talking to all the folks that were involved in that and, and learning those lessons and doing it better next time when it comes back as the Bellevue Rock and Roll Marathon.
That's right. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I'll talk about the Rock and Roll Marathon. I was pretty excited. Lots of people, actually, in terms of their state, probably just like July 4th, you know, lots of activities, a lot of energy, lots of folks that are, you know, participating in the marathon itself. The only thing I noticed that, I stayed there on Sunday, or, you know, almost most of it until it closed. People didn't really move around, not to stay at the park itself. They basically ran and they scattered. So I was just curious, you know, that might be an area where there could be more activities, you know, after, before the actual marathon itself, so that, you know, they can be there. And the second is, I think Deputy Mayor kind of mentioned it, how do we spread that crowd throughout the city? Absolutely, it's a city effort. The city department was wonderful because it's such a major undertaking. They all work together, especially the police. I understand that every police officer's working. Nobody's taking the day off. It would be good if Crossroads, Factoria, other places, East Gate, you know, have some directed business from this activity. That would be great. But I don't think so, as I, you know, probably not. I don't know. I don't, I have no numbers. You have some numbers, but that's something to think about. The numbers just show. Finally, on the Rock and Roll, just finish up, and now I have some more questions for you. You mentioned $4.8 million visitor spending. How do you get that number?
Also, that number was provided to us from Visit Bellevue. They have access to a data portal that can track visitor spending.
So traditional matrix, they can figure out somehow, somewhere.
Yes. It can, it can pull credit card transactions, et cetera.
Compared to us, it's a good, decent number. But like we say, if you can encourage more business throughout the city, the number might even be much better.
Yes. We will look for those opportunities.
My, thank you for the presentation. You know, my comment is, you guys have done a great job locally. I mean, the recovery, the downtown, the Main Street, BDA, you know, all the things that we're doing, it's good. And businesses are here and employee, you know, working. That's good stuff. I just wanted to make a point. You know, you mentioned about workforce and a number of things, you know, you have lots of regional programs, you know, including Visit Bellevue, you know, tourism, that's all good. However, I, I believe that there's another sector which, you know, we should also be working on a lot, but I don't think it's being apparent, you know. I don't, you didn't talk about it. Maybe you, you would talk about it at a different meeting. It's a regional, regional collaboration of economic development. As we know, economic development is regional, should be. Because whatever we do, like offer space like this and that, it's going to be affected by the, the big picture, the regional. If, if the whole economy collapsed, if people have nothing to do in, in any city around here, Seattle, if they don't go to Space Needle, the, the Pike Street Market, we're going to be affected. And we, we share the same, same priorities. Workforce study, no question. We share aggregation force. We share, you know, many things. People come, they look, and they, we're doing great. So if they come here, most likely we have advantage because you're doing so well. We're doing so well locally. We attract them to come here. But they got to come here first to do all the other regional stuff. And a lot of regional stuff they are already doing. You know, I'm on the EDD Boys, you know, Greater Seattle Partnership. So these are all discussed, and you know that. You support me. We, we talk about those issues. The question I have, how do we take advantage of all the regional discussion, rely on their numbers, and then we can piggyback on those? And they would use us as models of success, and we can be, because you guys do so locally. And so they will work, would work together on the regional issue, global issues, people from other countries, places. They come, they not just come to Bellevue. They can not just come Seattle. They want to see the whole region. So we need to be plugged in. And when we plug in, then we can show them, this is Bellevue. And it's their choice to make, you know, which one fits the best, you know, depending on the business, employee, and whoever. We, we can't tell Amazon, say, you have to work in Pacific Northwest area. We can't. But they happen to be here, and they happen to choose us. If they're not here, we won't see them, right? They'll be in Arlington. So I think that's something I, I would like to ask you in terms of a couple of things. You talk about workforce. We talk about, you know, even equity, you know, care, childcare, pop, pop and mom, you know, facilities. Every city, every jurisdiction wants to work on those things. So why don't you give me a few, few comments, bars? How do we, and what have we done if we have in collaboration of the regional development?
Absolutely. So I should have mentioned that the new company that's arriving next week, Spaceflight, was a joint work with Greater Seattle Partners, our Regional Economic Development Agency. They were the global marketing arm, and they brought them to the region and then helped them settle in Bellevue. So we're very thankful to them for that. We're also doing a lot of work with regional partners around workforce. So we've been engaged with the Workforce Development Council, the Workforce Development Board, which is a different organization, and those types of regional bodies to help understand how Bellevue can help the east side plug into the existing regional resources. And then we're also engaged with other, more younger and earlier-stage activities, like the Port of Seattle is leading a project called, I think it's called Connecting Communities, which is focused on providing additional culturally competent resources for our small business community. So our staff is with the port, helping them understand what the needs are, particularly on the east side, and then helping them get connected to east-side community organizations that can help advance that work. So we don't get into all of the details during every presentation, but we are engaged on, with all of the regional work.
I hope in the future, we can get a little bit more information, more detail regarding those. One comment I have, a week ago, there's a South Korean trade delegation. They were, I think, invited by the Port of Seattle, and they visited with various, like officials in both Harrow, Port Commissioners, and other county officials. And those are the opportunities that we need to embark on. We need to be present because we need to show them what Bellevue can offer and how we're consistent, you know, compatible with the whole regional priorities. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. It's always interesting to be on the, on the end of this because there's amazing things that have been said already, and I agree, agree with this. And I, I don't want to comment. I appreciate Councilmember Lee's bringing about the regional piece. And, you know, one of the things in terms of, like the South Korean group, both you and, and the Deputy Mayor are connected with the Economic Development Group that helps with that. So you can, you know, we have some avenues to bring them, like we've done before, and things. But that is something to always keep in mind. I think one of the things you said, actually, at the very beginning, is, is kind of the frame of all of this. What we, what makes Bellevue work well, two big things. It's workforce and a regional view. And you made that very clear. And we've been working together, we've been doing the Innovation Triangle for a long time with the cities around us. And we are working all these with the cities. And like next year, we get them more involved in, say, the, the marathon or these type of things. So we, and we certainly do this with the housing and all these other things. Again, that's one of the strengths of Bellevue is that we're in the middle of a, a region with other cities that are working on these, and people live across the lines. We found that out, that people don't understand, if, you know, you go, you're in a, in an area where you're in Kirkland or Bellevue, and you think you're in Bellevue, Bellevue, but you want to tell Kirkland something to do, whatever. So everybody has this idea, we're working in a region. So I think that's, that's one of the strong points we have, as you said. And, you know, one of the things that is also interesting, and you mentioned GIX and all that, and one of the others I wanted to add was Bothell, UW-Bothell. Apparently, most of the students, a large percentage, are from Bellevue. And they have a lot of things going on. We've worked with them before. So that's another part of the, the, you know, the college aspect of this. I mean, there's so many things to get into. But I think what is really exciting is we're working with, you know, the, the arts district piece of this is part of it, working with Bell Red, getting that going, getting the future, we're already going future-wise on, on Bell Red and the things that are happening there. And Wilberton and all that piece, we have those opportunities to do exactly what you're talking about on these things. And, and the other is, of course, I think is important, is looking at, we would talk a lot about what's going to happen with the, the office buildings and all that. And there are a number of cities already working on this kind of thing, too, in different places around the country where they've substantially moved office structures to housing structures. And that, you know, that's something to look at as well. But, and I think one thing that this whole thing is, has really brought us to doing, which is really good, is we had a great foundation, and we fortunately were working really hard before the pandemic hit. But it's really, I think, made us work even more, well, work harder, but more, but smarter in a sense of what we have and what the opportunities. As you said at the beginning, we're very lucky where we are in this pandemic and that thing. So having that in place, I think, you know, this housing shift is going to come. And it really gives us, it, it also comes, at the same time, we have gone from a very difficult to get, particularly in some segments of the, of the community, the city, and in businesses, a real effort on affordable housing and those things, to a universal belief of affordable, for affordable housing and for workforce and for mom-and-pop shops. And for making this, and, you know, Amazon, others believe that they want their employees to, they like for them to live here, but they want them to want to stay here or come here. And so I think we're, we've, you know, put this in place, and you've done a really good job of outlining this. And as, you know, as it shows where there are a lot of questions to ask, and hope, you know, we'll have you report back on this. But I, I'm very excited about it. I think this is an excellent report, and we're on the right, the right path. And we're going to face issues, as we'll find out next month or so, with the budgets and things. But I still think, from what we've heard, we, we have the resources to make this happen. That's the other thing. It's easy to come forth and say, well, we have these plans, these plans, and these plans. But I feel very strongly that we, with the staff, with the city and the council and the community working together, we have the resources and the will, which is the most important part, probably, to make this happen. So thank you very much for the presentation. I, I think we are on the right track. And, you know, our job is to help make sure it, it happens. So thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That was a great presentation. It's always nice to hear from you. We'll take a quick break here, come back at quarter till, and finish up our meeting. All right. Next on our agenda is an ordinance. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The last item on your agenda is Ordinance 6675 that approves an increase to, you know, the arch appropriation for the Sama Senior Apartments located in Bothell. It is also to allow me, as the city manager, to enter an agreement for donation from Amazon. So joining us this evening is Michael Condon, Director of Community Development, for a brief presentation. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Elsa Kings wanted to be here this evening. She had some family matters, and I told her to take the night off and, and deal with those. So her, her regrets, you'll see her at a, at a future meeting, and I'm subbing for her this evening. But this will be very brief. It's pretty straightforward. So just to, very quickly, Mr. Miyake mentioned what we're So just to very quickly, Mr. Miyake mentioned what we're asking of the council this evening to adopt the ordinance. Just a little bit about the project, this is 76 units for seniors at 50% of area median income or below income. It is located in Bothell, it will be located in Bothell once we get it constructed. The, the property was previously owned by the city of Bothell, they sold it to Imagine Housing as the developer. Part of the city's contribution, Bothell's contribution, was a discount of the sale price on that property, 25% discount. They are looking at being an ultra-high energy efficiency building, so they're working on incorporating all of that into the design. The critical part of the timeline here and why we're before you this evening is that September 28th date, that's when they close on the financing. So this has been, this project has been three-plus years in the making, and a lot of the complications have been on the fund, the funding side, is often the case with these types of projects. So with this donation from Amazon, that closes that funding gap and allows them to go forward with the project. You can see a little bit about the funding there, this dates back to 2019 and 2020. The city of Bellevue contributed some monies to this, $62,200. The $500,000 includes that contribution from Bellevue, as well as other Arch cities that were all part of that, in addition to the CDBG funding. So again, this is the, the $2 million from Amazon, the donation will close the funding gap and allow the project to move forward. This did have to go through the regular process for funding, so the Arch Board recommended approval of the $2 million and applying it to this project. Arch cannot accept the funds directly because of the, the type of organization that they are. So the city of Bellevue, as the administrative agency and also as the fiscal agency, will be accepting the money on behalf of Arch, and then turning the money over to them, they'll go into their housing fund, and then the $2 million will go toward this project as a loan that will eventually be paid back to Arch for use in other projects. There are no additional Bellevue funds that will be part of this, just to, to make that clear. And then, again, the action we're asking for this evening is approval of the ordinance that's before you, and the ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into that agreement for the donation from Amazon, and also amends the appropriation for this project to include that $2 million. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so again, let's put that slide up, that underscores that we're not taking, asking for any new money from Bellevue.
Oops.
I think it's for...
That one?
Yeah, but this is a pass-through, these are pass-through funds?
That's correct. These are purely pass-through funds, the city accepts them and turns them over to, to Arch.
Okay, well, that sounds like a very good news story to me. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
I'll just make a comment on how much I appreciate Amazon making this donation. They've been a really great partner to Bellevue, and I am absolutely prepared to vote yes.
Okay. Anything, anything of Deputy Mayor?
As well as on the Human Services Commission, this is not the first donation from Amazon to much-needed funds.
That's correct.
And, and the impact of not only those donations to the, to the Human Services Fund, but to housing is, is, is quite dramatic, and I just want to echo Councilmember Robertson's thought, that really appreciate Amazon being such a great partner in providing more affordable housing in our, in, in Bellevue and in the region in general.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I echo those, both those comments, and in talking with some Amazon folks not too recently, I mean, not too long ago, one of the things they, they talked about in, the way they're working, and so glad to be in Bellevue, is they have the opportunity to work with us on these things, and they're very, very serious about working on affordable housing and other things for, to make this a place where their employees want to be and help make the city better. So that's, that's fantastic, and I appreciate that very much, and this is, this is great.
Okay, I'll comment, and then Councilmembers on, and then Councilmember Lee. So, you know, the thing I love about this, we can incentivize 80% area median income priced units, but you cannot incentivize this tight depth of affordability. So for Amazon to come in as a community partner, partner to Arch and to the region, and create this kind of affordability to this vulnerable population, it wouldn't happen without this type of donation, so it really is appreciative, and it's special, really does make them a great community partner. Councilmembers on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree as well, that this is a win-win for everyone, so excited to support this. I did have a question, because I know with Arch, I thought that the lead city moved to, is now Kirkland, so just to clarify, any one of the cities can accept donations in the future? It's just that we leaned in first?
That is correct. Any city, any city could be accepting the funds. Bellevue happened to, we had the capacity, we were already working with Amazon on other issues, so it was just, the, the most expedient way to do this was, was through this mechanism with the city of Bellevue.
Okay, great, we're happy to support it, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
I just wanted to add and echo all the councilmembers, that Amazon is a great corporate partner, corporate citizen for the city of Bellevue, so thank them.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
We certainly do, Mayor. I move to adopt Ordinance 6675, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the Imagine Housing Sama senior apartments in an amount of $2 million, as recommended by Arch, our Regional Coalition, Coalition for Housing, and their executive board, in amending the 2021, 2022 housing fund to increase the appropriation by $2 million.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we are adjourned.